Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is John Reagan Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ronald Brooks.
Present.
Todd Corain.
Present.
Gaurakesh Nalan.
Present.
Sierra Samara.
Present.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Plenum Planner Adam Menard.
Here.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressy.
Here.
Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, October 11th, now called order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Pig's executive order of March 12th, 2020, extended on June 16th, 2021. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133-747-477. Or the public can join via computer at go2meeting.com/join/133-747-477. Remote access information is posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Vision. Is there anyone in the audience that is recording the meeting tonight? Being none, accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and regional planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening, now first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda tonight is applicant Sparhawk Realty requesting a site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for two buildings, six units, multifamily development, and related site improvements at 404 Oxford Street North, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 40, parcel 82. This has been continued from our 9/27/22 meeting. Is there anyone here representing Sparhawk?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Brian Waterman from WBA Design Group. Would you like these on the table or on up on the?
I understand. It'd be good.
Yeah.
No.
So, as you mentioned, this is continued from the end of September. There were...we had submitted a reply letter to the initial Graves review. We just received the latest Graves review letter today. They were satisfied with all the changes and responses that were done since that time. So, they had no other changes or comments between that time. Touching back to the Planning Board's comments from the 27th, there was discussion on some of the estimated seasonal high groundwater. So, we ran the numbers and reduced them from the soil data logs. So, the highest seasonal high groundwater was in this pit at 570.7. And we have a shot down here from when we did the original survey that was at 570.5 at the edge of water when that isolated what one has water in it. So, groundwater is very close to the seasonal high groundwater you anticipate in the wild. Let's see. Mr. Chairman, you had pointed out that the bit concrete paving detail had set a half an inch. That was just the way the text box was made, so he fixed that. It is now adjusted to the one and a half inch in the box.
John? That's just for the top course, correct?
Yes. Let's see. All right. You have B and C of both one and a half, so you'd have three in the top would be for bit concrete block, be eight. And the other two would be 12, 12 inches on top. Someone else had asked if they would be individual owners are owned by one entity and then rented out each unit. If that is the case, they would be owned by one entity and each unit rented out separately.
So, the entire apartment complex, six units, are going to be one entity owner?
Yeah, and then they rent each unit.
Okay.
There was a question on the two-inch water line going to each building unit. We conferred with the water department that the two-inch line is fine. They will have questions when it goes to building whether or not there'll be, you know, four separate meters for this unit, two separate for this unit, or there'll be one main meter, and then it'll be billed out that way. So, that's usually, that'll be determined when they go to build. However, the rental people, if they want to just do one main meter on each building and then there's a separate bill, or each, where the two-inch line comes in, each unit would have its own meter, is the way the water department explained it. Oh, there was a question on the two catch basins. The one is a storm scepter. The other question was, is a deep sump putted? And yes, it is a deep sump, put a catch basin. The sump is five feet. I think that addressed the...oh, we did, we added the proposed sewer manhole here that's at the stub of the sewer off the road. We had the existing invert from the sewer department, but it was kind of hidden under a label there, so we fixed that. So, that shows up clearly now. So, I think that addressed the Board's concerns at the last meeting. And then, again, like I said, Graves responded today that they were satisfied with all the other items. So, open it up to you.
Anyone from the audience that has any questions? Being none. Sierra, do you have any questions? Gaurakesh?
I have a couple. One is the water and sewer. You said they had provided you guidance. Is that, is that a report that you received?
I haven't seen anything written, no.
No.
That'd be a question for Adam. Adam, have we received any letters from water sewer, water or sewer fire or?
They reviewed the plans. I don't recall any specific problems or concerns. They would, this is the type of thing that they would have to review, and they'd have to be connection fees and all that when they go in. So, it's kind of on those departments to make sure it's done properly.
Okay.
One of the, two comments that we did receive for fire was adding the striped fire lane. And then they also wanted to, I believe it's the fire department connection shown here on the plan, which was done, you know, prior to the initial.
Was that a hydrant?
Yeah, let's see.
Don't say hydrant.
Hydrant is right there, yep.
That's the six-inch. That's the six-inch pipe?
Well, the six-inch water that goes to this building is for the sprinkler system.
That's right.
The four-unit building is required to be sprinkled, so that's that six-inch line.
The fire department connection is not identified as a hydrant. It's identified as a fire department connection. That could be anything.
No, right here. There's eight-inch gate valve, fire hydrant, eight by six by AT, and then fire department connector connection here. They're called out as all separate.
Would the fire department connection be the hydrant? That makes no sense to me, but hey, that's what they want.
One more question, John. The conservation commission, they have reviewed it?
Yes, we were, we had a sidewalk. We were continued to, I believe it was last week.
Okay.
They were going to close the hearing, but they failed to advertise, so we are continued to tomorrow night, the conservation period. But the chairman indicated they were fine with the changes, so things were done. And then ZBA is October 20th, so next week.
That's all I have.
Ron?
Can you clarify for me one more time the asphalt? Is it inch and a half base and inch and a half top?
Yeah, it's a, well, it's a, it's a three-inch top laid in two quarters, one and a half. I think it's already, so.
Six inches of asphalt there?
No.
No. It'd be a minimum of 11 to 15, depending on if it's a walkway or if it's a drive.
I'm, I'm not including the prep underneath.
No, no, there's...if it's a bit concrete block, it has eight to 12 inches of gravel, depending on if it's a driveway.
Yeah.
And then it has a binder course of one and a half and a top course of one and a half.
Yeah, that's what I want, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Todd, do you have any questions?
Can you just clarify the next, so the, you know, big concrete road is 12 inches? And then is it one and a half and one and a half as well, or half and half?
No, one and a half and one and a half.
Okay, because I think it's still.
Still offset.
It's still offset and on our, on our version.
Oh, and they love by 17, it might be, yeah. This definitely says one and a half and one and a half. That's on.
That's what I wanted to check.
Yeah.
So, this might be for Adam. Adam, have we seen the Graves letter? Have you seen the Graves letter? And is there anything in there?
I've seen that there weren't any comments. The only real comment was conservation.
No, no one.
And that's, that's been addressed. And the other comment was, we don't have emergency contacts, but we can get that when they begin construction.
Okay, that's all I have.
My question is back to sewer line. Sewer department approved a six-inch main. Only to serve six units?
Right, six-inch line. It will handle a four-inch is more than adequate based on flows, but we put in a six, so there'd be no clogging. Yes, and sewer department was finding six-inch for...I have a flow calculation if you need it, but it's.
Now, when you tie into the buildings off the six-inch main, you're in a six by six Y?
Uh, let's see.
Or YT, TY?
The sewer cleanup in line from the building is going to the 45 elbow bell, a six by six by 45 PVC Y into the six-inch service lateral. So, it would show the D's.
That's the cleanup. I'm talking about when you come off the main.
Oh, off the main.
It looks like a Y branch on your next section up on sheet C5.
Okay, C5. Oh, the sewer pipe connection here?
Yep. Trying to make sure it wasn't a Y.
Oh, sewer building connection, yeah.
Yep. That'll be a six by six.
Yes, call that six inch. I have a copy of the Graves letter from today, if you'd like it.
Yeah.
I'm raising your frames and covers. You have a two course minimum. What's the maximum?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
On your sewer manholes, and that would go for your drain manholes, too. Your courses of brick under the frame and cover to raise it to grade. You have a two-course minimum. I was wondering what the maximum was. Max 12, 12 inches?
I am not sure.
I think that's what it says. Minimum of two courses, max of 12 inches using sewer brick. That's fine. That's standard. On your eight by eight by six-inch T, are you gonna, I take it you're gonna cut a T in?
Are you looking at plan view or a detail?
Plan view on C3.
I was creating a green picture. I'm trying to see. I don't think we have a T on the sewer.
No, on the water.
A water?
On the water, yeah.
Yeah, because there's an eight-inch line in the, in the existing road.
I would suggest making that a valve anchoring T.
A what?
Valve anchoring T. There's a gland on the six-inch side behind where the, right in the mechanical joint, the glands, split gland right on the T itself, and you tie the valve to it, so it can't go anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we got from the water department, but I mean, we would be doing shop drawings and they'd all be approved. And it's got to be done by a licensed approved drain layer for Auburn, so water.
Okay.
But I'll make a note of it, put in there.
Forget about anchoring T on the hydrant connection. And on your plan view, the hydrant assembly, even on your profile, you show the thrust block. I don't know if you're going to require them, or the water pump's going to require you to rod it, too, rod it back to the T. I don't know what they do, but I don't know what they're doing today, so. Like you said, you got to submit the hydrant and all that stuff to the water department.
Yep.
That's all I have. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Steve, no questions?
One thing, John. Just, you know, I think on that sheet, like in the notes, it says per town of Northboro requirements, and then, yeah, in the fire hydrant description. I'll show it here.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Got it.
It says what?
It shows town of Northboro.
That's already.
Or, yeah, yeah. It's a standard detail, so they probably copied it from.
Cut and paste. That'll have to be changed to say the Auburn Water Farm.
Yeah, I'm making note of that. When we issue the construction set, it'll be.
Any other questions? Any other concerns?
Do we normally wait for ConCom to be done before we take a vote?
With the condition, and the zoning board. So, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion, close the public hearing.
Second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Sierra?
I'm all abstained. Can I abstain now?
You can't, we're just closing the meeting.
Oh, okay, then I.
Gaurakesh?
Hi.
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 Myself, John Reagan, and I, as a vote. May I have a motion to approve with the condition that it passes ConCom and zoning board of appeals approval?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Gaurakesh?
Aye.
Sierra?
Abstained.
Next up.
Thank you very much.
You're an aye?
You're an aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night. Good luck.
Applicant Richard Hakala requesting site plan approval, next on our agenda under Section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for church at 280 Oxford Street North, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 17, parcel 211. Continue from 9/27/22. Is there anyone in the audience representing Richard Hakala? Being none, they have not turned in the plans. So, may I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting of October 25th?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Gaurakesh?
Aye.
Sierra? Myself, John Reagan, and I, as a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant Brendan Greeley requesting a site plan approval under Section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for garage and site improvements to be constructed at an existing commercial business at Full Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 28, parcel 3. Is there anyone here? Brendan Greeley. Being none. May I have a motion to continue this? Brendan Greeley, application to our October 25th meeting.
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Sierra?
Aye.
Gaurakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, and I, as a vote. It will be continued to our October 25th meeting. Applicant Todd Ostakolowicz, quality contractor requesting site prep approval under Section 9.4 and 3.2.5.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for general service commercial buildings with site improvements. A waiver for landscape plan is requested at 282 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 25, parcel 25. I talked this over with Adam. He said everything's okay except for the handicap sign. So, it's okay to approve with the condition that they place the handicap sign as required. May I have a motion to approve with the condition for the handicap sign?
Should we close the hearing?
Sorry. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
The engineer is on the computer if you want to speak.
Again, this is Zach from Existing Grade. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, beautiful. Yeah, so again, give you a quick summary. We submitted the revised plans. We went through the original Graves common letter and addressed everything. Again, there wasn't a miscommunication oversight on my side, but, you know, as is typical with those handicap spots, we are going to have the standard placard sign placed in front of those. And again, I think that's really the only outstanding.
That was it?
Comment that was provided from that, that letter.
Yeah, that was the only comment. You have anything else to add, or?
I mean, again, just, I could go through the changes that we made. I mean, I don't want to waste anybody's time, you know, going over kind of what happened if it's not needed, but there was just some revisions, some kind of planned cleanup. We revised some of the details based upon the last meeting that we had to make sure we had the adequate pavement width, or, excuse me, pavement depths as, as required. Again, we provided a landscaping plan so that that waiver is, is not going to be requested. And then we did revise the lighting plan and photometric layout for, for the site as well.
Anybody have any questions in the audience? Being none. Sierra, do you have any questions?
No.
Gaurakesh?
No, no question.
Ron?
No.
Todd?
No.
I don't have any questions either. So, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Gaurakesh?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, and I, as a vote. May I have a motion to approve with the condition that the handicap signs are put in as required?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Sierra?
Aye.
Gaurakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, and I, it is a vote. You're all set.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is applicant Robert Lemansky for GL McKinstry Trust for definitive subdivision plan for two lot, single-family home development with site improvements of property located at Claire Drive and Linda Avenue, Auburn, Mass. 01501. Is your owner here representing Robert Lemansky? Being none. Can we take this off the agenda, Adam?
That was going to be my question, is how long do we keep continuing this?
Why don't we continue at one more meeting, and I'll have a definitive answer, and we can kind of, if we want to, see if they want to withdraw first before, it's like an approve or deny kind of situation. I don't think you want to approve, but I don't think denying it at this point is necessary. So, why don't we wait two weeks for definitive?
Continue it?
I can kind of get a comment from, from them first.
May I have a motion to continue this hearing to our next meeting?
I'll make a motion and we continue for two weeks.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Sierra?
Aye.
Gaurakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, and I, it is a vote. Discussion Commerce Drive Lot 2 release. That is over here past the Shell Station.
Steve O'Connell.
What's that?
Steve O'Connell.
Oh, Steve. Hi, Steve.
Hi, good evening.
I believe this is all set to go. I've looked at the required withholding, basically. And I think it's quite a hefty sum, and the prices look pretty reasonable to me. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. O'Connell? Anybody have any questions, Sierra?
No.
Gaurakesh?
No.
Ron?
No.
Todd?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Sierra?
Aye.
Gaurakesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
John Reagan, and I, it is a vote. You're all set, Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you very much. See you soon.
Yep. Decisions on 17 Curtis Street, which we have to sign. And we can do that once we get to pass the next. May I have a motion to approve meeting minutes from our last meeting?
I'll make that motion.
As amended, I should say. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Sierra?
Aye.
Gaurakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, and I, it is approved as amended. I'll show you after. And then, um, any new business unforeseen by the Chair? None. Town plan or update?
Just one quick update. Um, our first November meeting is November 8th. That is Election Day. I would recommend you postpone your November meeting until the 15th. Um, you normally only meet once in November anyways because of the holiday, so, um, I think that'd be all right.
Anybody else have any arguments? Do we need to vote on that, Adam?
No.
Okay. Everybody's okay with November 15th? Okay, anything else, Adam?
That's it.
I have nothing else. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Sierra?
Aye.
Varkash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, and I, it is a vote.